I'd like to call the September meeting of the Haywood County Schools Board of Education to order. This time, I'd like to ask Mr. Jimmy Rogers to lead us in our board prayer, immediately followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
Mr. Prey. Most kind grace, heavenly father, again, we want to thank you for the opportunity to be here. Lord, as we have just experienced a memory of 20 years ago, Lord, of our country taking a terrible tragic hit. Lord, we pray for your guidance and direction. Lord, this is tough times, it's trying times. Lord, we also know that during the COVID and everything going on in this world, Lord, today, that it's really hard times on everybody, stressful times. But, Lord, let us keep our eyes upon you. Let us keep our eyes upon the true meaning of what we're here for. And, Lord, let this board continue to be thankful for the beautiful education opportunities that we can have within Haywood County schools. We thank you, Lord, that we are able to teach these children. We thank you for the teachers that are here, for the staff. These people have been very dedicated, Lord. And we can show, it has shown, in the success of Haywood County schools. And, Lord, as this board's here, we pray that you help and guide us to make the right decisions, to continue the betterment of education of the children of Haywood County. And, Lord, we also pray that you be with the community, be with our citizens. Lord, let's not blame, but let's be thankful for what we have. Let each and every one of us be thankful every day and look to you for guidance. In all these things, my Lord, we ask in our precious name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Under announcements, I hope that's not my truck out there going. Maybe, I don't know. It's not mine, somebody. Yeah, two of them's going. Anyway, under announcements, Jimmy, on behalf of the board, I'd like to offer our condolences again for Ima Jean. You're still in our prayers and thoughts, and we're glad to have you back.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and again, thank you for the, for this board and continued prayers and supports in this whole community, and it's been very well felt, and so thank everybody so much.
Dr. Rogers, we offer our condolences for the loss of your mom recently. We also would like to offer condolences to the Steve Ledford family and the loss of Steve. Keep that family in your prayers and thoughts and the whole community. Lord, we ask that you also be with Mr. Smathers, he's not with us tonight because he's had some surgery done today, and I understand he's doing well. So, keep those folks in your prayers. Our next regular board meeting will be Monday, October 11th at 7:00, here at the Education Center. I do think we've set off all day long. All right. Under agenda adjustments, do we have any additions that we need to do for building the grounds or anything, Dr. Rogers? All right. Three items under building the grounds, we'll do it right after the finance stuff at 25, without objection. All right. Just to entertain a motion, we approve the agenda as amended.
Some move.
Mr. Patridge made the motion, submitted by Mr. Rogers. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Actually, I have Ms. Fox up for some special recognitions.
Good evening, Chairman Francis, members of the board, Dr. Nolte, Dr. Utham, and Ms. Barker. Tonight, it's my honor to introduce to you 23 Haywood County students who have been recognized as AP Scholars by the AP Program of the College Board. This recognition is given to students who have demonstrated outstanding college-level achievement through their performance on multiple AP exams. There are three AP Scholar designations based on the following criteria. AP Scholar, students who receive scores of three or higher on three or more AP exams. AP Scholar with Honor, students who receive an average score of at least 3.25 on all AP exams taken, and scores of three or higher on four or more of these exams. And then, an AP Scholar with Distinction is students who receive an average score of at least 3.5 on all AP exams taken, and scores of three or higher on five or more of these exams. These recognitions are not made by College Board until the fall of the year, so some of the students that we will recognize tonight are current students, and some of them are students who have graduated in the spring. We have some students who were able to be here with us that have already graduated, some have gone on to school, and then we have some that are participating in some extra curricular activities that maybe weren't able to be here. Also had some, is when they came in, apologized for not being dressed in their minds appropriately, but they came straight from their activities, and I told them they looked great because they're wearing their colors right, so. This is a big accomplishment. As you know, AP courses are some of the most rigorous kids could take, and they are very difficult, and scoring a three is not an easy task. So, we have 18 students who earned the designation of AP Scholar, and those students are: Kristen Basulto. Anthony Blazer. Lucas Cody. Maria Carrera. Alexander Georgiev. Jackson Hollis. Monica Lamb. Ella Larson. Amanda Markley. M. Nguyen. Morgan Hunnam. William Road Armour. Heather Robinson. Riley Siple. Jacob Smith. Madison Stewart. Nicholas Sutton. Casey Vandenberg. Our next five students are students that received the designation of AP Scholar with Honor. Kennedy Barker. Harper Swab. Tyra Schufert. And we also had Letty Jo Watson. And Susan Zang.
Jackson, you going to state, or have you decided yet? That's what I'd like your mom to say if you hadn't decided yet.
It was charged.
That's why you put man's law. Next, we have Ms. Jenny Wood.
Chairman Francis, members of the board, I'm excited tonight to be able to recognize our Teacher Assistance of the Year for '21, '22. These guys go above and beyond, and they get asked to do things that make most of us run the other way, so. They're the go-tos, I know. Whenever there's a crisis, they're the first ones that the principals call for help, so it's my pleasure tonight to be able to recognize, from each of the elementary schools, except for Clyde, Byron hired his TA of the year as a teacher, so she, she no longer qualified for that. From Bethel Elementary School, Amber Messer. From Hazelwood Elementary School, Diane Bruce. From Jonathan Valley, Chris Hill. From Junealuska, Gray Ross, and she couldn't be here tonight. From Medebruck, Kim Ball. From North Canton, Lisa Fisher. And from Riverbend, Kat Moore, who couldn't be here tonight either, so congratulations, we appreciate you, and we thank you for every single thing you do every day.
Next, Mr. Hines has some recognitions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. It is my pleasure and privilege tonight to present an award to one of our beginning teachers. You can imagine, and some of you may have done it before, but you can imagine coming right out of school and being placed in a school as a teacher and giving 20 elementary students and saying, "There you go." And we try really hard not to do that and have a great beginning teacher program, and we have six BT liaisons, as we call them, and we have hundreds of mentors in the school who help these folks in their first three years and make sure that they're successful. Tonight, we have with us Diane Chadwick, who is head of the BT program. We've got Lee Messer with us, who's one of the liaisons. Come on up. Mary Lee Sees, who also helps with elementary. And from what I hear, this year's choice has been a pleasure to work with. It hasn't been difficult to make her successful at all. She has done a fantastic job, and so we want to let Ms. Lee Messer say a few words about her. She's worked with her this year, and she wants to tell you some things about what a great job she's done.
There you are, Chairman Francis and the board. I'm Lee Messer, and this is Mary Lee Sees, my colleague, and we have the privilege of supporting beginning teachers in our county. And when we were asked to think about a nominee, who was the ultimate beginning teacher? Ms. Chelsea Carpenter fit that. She is a natural teacher, and when you go in her classroom, it's a kindergarten classroom at Jonathan Valley Elementary, and Mary Lee and I are kindergarten people, and when we see a kindergarten teacher that is as good as the person she's standing next to, she needs to be recognized. And so, we are so proud of you, and we look forward to the future, and she's a Haywood County child. She's come through our school system, so I think that needs to be said as well.
Chelsea, we also have a gift card for you. We want to thank Ms. Jenny Wood and the Haywood County Schools Foundation for providing the gift card, and we hope that you go have a spa day. You can spend it on anything you want to, but knowing elementary teachers, you're going to go buy something for your classroom, and that's okay too. There you go. Thank you. Congratulations.
Congratulations to all of our honorees tonight. Some wonderful awards and wonderful people that we've recognized tonight, high flyers as well. Next, we have Ms. Barker with some great news and some 2021 school performance data that I think you'll be interested in hearing and excited to hear about as well. Ms. Barker.
Well, congratulations to Chelsea. I don't think this is on, Kim. I watched her grow up, and I'm, I'm fine, I'm loud, I just make sure you're on. And she has really turned into a phenomenal teacher, so congratulations to her. Chairman Francis and members of the board, wow, finally a reason to celebrate. Some good news regarding our students that I want to share with you and their academic success from last year. I think we're all aware of the many difficulties our student, staff, and community have experienced following the start of the COVID-19 pandemic in March of 2020. As you know, we didn't test that spring in 2020, so this year's scores represent the first intergrade, intercourse assessments we've given since the pandemic started. I always like to say that academic data tells a story, whether it's in a school or in a classroom, there's always a story there, and this data story is just about the many difficult decisions that were made in regards to students receiving the best education possible in a world most of us never envisioned prior to March of 2020. There are a lot of hard decisions made by this board, by our superintendent, and I just want you to know that this data reflects the teaching and learning that occurred because of these decisions. Our teachers taught us, our teachers taught, and our leaders led with a sense of urgency, no excuses. I think that's very important to know. We never made excuses. Their dedication was inspiring. Our students proved to us that they're resilient and stronger than any of us ever imagined. This generation is going to be okay. These kids were strong. Out of 115 school districts, from Manio to Murphy, Haywood County ranked 10th overall of 115 districts. Our community has so much to be proud of right now. Last week, I shared with you in a work session that we had the opportunity to meet with several DPI representatives. They came, you know, to see the flood, the disaster following the flood, but they also wanted to go to Pisgah and talk to those teachers and the admin and the students. They went to Bethel Middle and talked to a student and staff, and then we went, excuse me, went to the new location of Central Haywood High School where they're displaced right now. But Julie Pittman serves as a special assistant to the state superintendent, and she said, as she got ready to leave, and I quote her, she said, "What has struck me the most is a dichotomy of the many challenges Haywood has been faced with against the continued academic success of this district. That's it," she said, "that's your story, that's Haywood's story." And I know Clint talked about that, Mr. Connor, in his Principal of the Year speech last week, about recovery and how great our recovery has been. But I just want to applaud our support services staff who made our school safe, who fed us, who kept it clean, Dr. Putnam, who has organized all these efforts in regards to that, all your decisions from the superintendent and the board, and our teachers, who we changed schedules three times in the middle and high school last year. They pivoted, they turned, they adjusted, and they did it because they love our kids. And you said this the other night, Mr. Francis, you always knew we had a dedicated group of employees, but now the data's told the story, and we'll forever have that. So, at this time, I'm going to highlight several areas of interest. Do you want to drive, Brooke? Okay, so I'm going to let Brooke drive. We're going to work from left to right, and I will go through these rather quickly, and then I'll answer any questions, but I want to start with all subjects. So, these are, and then we'll get into reading specifically and math, but Haywood County Schools, you can see on the left, we were 10th of 115 districts at 56.3%. That is an eight-point drop from two years ago. However, in our district, in our region, our western region of the state, the average percent drop was 14%. We dropped less in any region in our district, in the western region. If you'll look to the right, third grade, 11th out of 115 districts. Fourth grade, fifth out of 115 districts in all subjects, and fifth grade, seventh out of 115. Sixth grade, 34. Seventh grade, 24. Eighth grade, 13th of 115, and high school, 11 out of 115, and that includes biology, English 2, math 3, math 1. All right, now we're going to look individually at math. Our math, we worked extremely hard. We were very concerned about our kids having gaps in math. We met remotely with our teachers, we provided a condensed version of power standards for our teachers, and we met with them, our coaches met with them, and constantly talked about focus and the big standards, and I think this shows. In third grade, we were eighth in the state. In fourth grade, we were number one in the state in fourth grade math. In fifth grade, number six. So, those numbers, and I want to thank Ms. Shipman here, Kim Shipman, our elementary supervisor, who worked day in and day out, because she knew every second counted for those kids too, and so I appreciate her leadership. Sixth grade math, 18th in the state. Seventh grade math, 29 out of 115, and eighth grade math, 15th in the state. And again, Carol, thank you for your leadership, our coach Knox Harden, our elementary coach Leslie Buchanan, for providing all that support for our principals and our teachers. High school math, this kind of blew me away. I'll tell you, math 1 is a hard subject. It is the old algebra that we took in high school, but we were 14th in the state in math 1, and 10th in the state in math 3. And again, thank you to Knox and Carol for their leadership, and all of our teachers out there who work so hard. When you look at reading, ELA, and Ms. Shipman and I have had several conversations about this, not quite as high as our math, but still very, very good, and we think too, you know, just having the amount of books in the hands of kids could have been a little bit, but still, these are great scores. We were 25th in third grade reading in the state of 115, 9th in fourth grade reading, and fifth grade was 11th. So, in third grade reading, there's a huge volume of reading that's done there, so. For our ELA in 6 through 8, 47th in sixth grade reading, that was showed to be, you know, that's always a transition period for our kids, and so we're continually working on sixth grade. Seventh grade, we were 23rd in the state, and eighth grade reading, 17th. Our English 2 and with our high school kids, we were 23rd in the state of 115 districts. Science, fifth grade science, 9th. Eighth grade science, 6th in the state. And biology, this one gets me, 16th of 115 districts. Our work keys, I told the board the other night, I would want my child to go to high school in Haywood County. I'm glad she does. 8th in the state in ACT, and you can see he's above us. Chapel Hill, Asheville City, Watauga, Elkin, Wake, Carteret, and Union. Haywood County 8th in ACT. We did not quit offering ACT prep just because colleges didn't, you know, scores were optional to send in. We increased those efforts and doubled down. Work keys, we were 15th in the state, and you can see a large number of tested students too, the percent that we tested. And those are the big district measures. I'll go over some, just some highlights, because there's stories within that data too. We could talk a long time about this, but I just want to answer any questions you have at the overall district data. Are y'all happy?
Still blown away. See, we got to say these Thursday night as well.
I know.
But I'm still pumped as ever. And I went home and was talking to my grandson, Kason, about how great the scores were, and I said, "Thank you, Kason, for pulling us up in our averages."
Kason was in fourth grade. Yeah, and there are just a couple, you know, our region, we've got a very competitive region, the western region counties, and we ranked number two in performance. Polk was above us, but we were number two in the western region also, so that speaks of all the counties in our region. Haywood Early College, they were featured in an article with Ed NC. I encourage you to research. I can send that to you guys. Just an excellent article with Ms. Fox and her staff there who continually to perform high in all areas, but they were tied for first in the state in just overall composite. They were tied for first. I think they're first place. Pisgah High School, when you look at high schools, ranked third in all the high schools in the western region, 9 through 12, and is in the top 7% of 362 traditional high schools, grades of 9 through 12. Got a lot of different kinds of high schools now, but we usually look at 9 through 12 because they look like us. And when you look at that, Pisgah ranked in the top 7%. And math 1, they ranked 10th in the state. And second in the western region. All of our elementary schools, and you can see the percent rank, ranked in the top 20%. Riverbend is in the top 1% of schools. Bethel, top 2%, Junealaska, top 3, North Canton, top 7, Hazelwood, top 12, Meadowbrook, top 13, Jonathan Valley, top 20, Clyde, top 22%, all of our elementaries. When you look at our 833 Title I pre-K elementary schools, again, a lot of different schools, 4, 5 schools, K-2 schools, but we're talking just Title I, pre-K through 5th grade. Riverbend was first in third grade reading in the state and eighth in third grade math out of 833. In fourth grade, they ranked second in reading and math out of 833. All these scores are in the top 1% in the state at Riverbend Elementary. That's phenomenal in a pandemic. Bethel Elementary, 5th grade math ranked 11th. They were in the top 1%. And their 5th grade science ranked 13th in the top 2%. North Canton 4th grade math ranked 13th in the top 2%. North Canton 5th grade science ranked 22nd in the top 3%. And Junealaska's 5th grade math ranked 19th in the top 2%. Their 4th grade reading ranked 10th in the top 2%. There's so many stories, and again, I'm pulling out 2, 1%, 2%, but they're all good scores. They all look good. Of approximately 408, 6 through 8 schools, Bethel Middle ranks in the top 15, Waynesville Middle in the top 22nd. They ranked 19th overall, and I'm in the top 5%. Their science did, Bethel Middle's science, excuse me, ranked 19th in the top 5%. Their 6th grade math ranked 18th in the top 5%. And Waynesville Middle's 8th grade math was in the top 13%. We talked about ACT. Haywood County Schools ranking 8th on the ACT. And the last page, I won't read these because I've gone over several of these, but there are 20-plus indicators here that we ranked in the top 20 of 115 districts in all these indicators, and I've mentioned most of those already. So, you know, again, it's leadership. And I appreciate your leadership, the central office leadership, our CNI staff for all the countless days of trying to support our schools and our principals and our teachers and our kids and our community, our support staff. It wouldn't have worked if one of those links was missing. So I'm proud to be representing this group and these kids, and so go Haywood County. Dr. Nolte said we'd do better than most people, and we did. Any other questions?
No, I think that's a beautiful job, and like you said, it's, it was a joint effort. It was their children participating in their classrooms, even though it's online, or if you couldn't find someone, you can't find a child or parent, and the parents and this leadership right here in this room, right over at that table, I thank y'all so much because it is a, it was a hard task. And like you say, during the COVID, this has been, this has been really tough. It's tough on our, on our whole community. And for us to be like this, yeah, we are number one in the state. I don't care what they say. I don't care what they say, it's 10th. We're number one as far as I'm concerned. So thank y'all.
I agree.
Dr. Nolte?
Yeah, Mr. Francis, if I, if I would, I said this Thursday, but I want to say it again tonight. You all, as a board, made some really tough decisions that were unpopular at the time. But I want to thank you for all along the way, doing everything that you could to have as many students in person as wanted to come and the state would allow. When we looked at our math performance, and we got it in before the reading, it was information we could crunch sooner. There was a 20-point difference between people who were in person part of the time on a rotating schedule or every day and people who were remote only. And we understand a lot of those remote-only people just could not come for very good reasons. But you took very tough stands when we recommended going five days a week, and that has paid off for our students, and no one's going to ever take that advantage away from them, and that is an advantage they will carry into this year and years to come. And so I just wanted to thank you. I want to thank our teachers for coming into the buildings last year, at the beginning of the year, and going to work when other people were at home. I want to thank our support services staff for making sure that our climate was safe and clean and working to have that climate. And so there's a lot of credit to go around, but we were determined for last year not to be a wasted year. And there are a lot of people who helped us do that. And I just want to thank everyone from the students who came and the decisions that you all made and everything in between. As I told the teacher of the teachers of the year at our banquet the other day, no one did more. No one did more. There were a few other districts that went five days a week, most went four, and a lot just didn't go at all. So I think it's a real testament to the resilience and the courage and the work of a lot of people in our county. So I just felt like I had to say that. Thank you very much.
All I'm going to add to it is amen. Amen.
Yeah, and I'm looking over here, and I could say something about each one of them personally. I don't want to leave Mr. Hines out. I drove him crazy throughout this. He hired summer school people. He paid stipends. I mean, it was all the time, so thank you. And Teresa compiles all this data for me, and so she's a, she dots her i's and checks her t's. She does a great job. And Kim Jackson, who has pulled every bit of remote learning, one-to-one together for our students, and now we do it like it's nothing. So thank you to everybody. I could go on and on, but anyway, in our community too, if you just moved here, you've just been here a while, congratulations. You moved to a great school system. If you've been here, you already know it, so I'm just proud to be here.
Thank you, Ms. Barker.
Thank y'all. Central Haywood reopening?
Yes.
Yes, okay, so Central Haywood, as you know, after the flooding, they were displaced from their building. And I just want to thank Graham Hanks, the principal of Waynesville Middle School, who graciously has taken in Central Haywood High School's staff into the old academy building on the Waynesville Middle School campus. He and Ms. Rogers have worked just seamlessly together. They moved, the following Monday, Ms. Rogers and her staff met students here for two days. They passed out, 100% of their students came and picked up Chromebooks within those two days. The following Wednesday, they were up and running with virtual instruction, and that was like August 30th. So I can't thank them enough for that sense of urgency again and the dedication to their kids. So right now, they have a plan. We have met Dr. Nolte and I, Dr. Putnam with those principals, and Tim Bushnell, our IPG grant coach, and we have a plan. Ms. Rogers proposed a plan to begin in-person instruction again with those Central Haywood High School students. That would begin on Monday, September 20th. They would begin face-to-face. However, because that facility is smaller, only half of the students would be able to attend at one time, so she has a schedule for that. It would be like an A/B day where certain students would come on Monday and Tuesday, the other half would come on Wednesday and Thursday, and then Friday would be all Google meets with those students. That will meet the calendar requirement per Jenny Wood, and thank you, Jenny, for all the time you spend on calendars. You've become quite the expert. You were already. But so I would just like to give you that information, and we're excited about getting those kids back in the building. Those teachers, go see them. They have done a phenomenal job getting moved and starting up instruction with those kids. Again, the space is, it's good, so we're glad we have it at this point. Any questions about Central Haywood High School?
Great news that they're back in the classroom.
Yes, I agree.
That is.
So Central, is it Waynesville now?
Central, yeah, they're at Waynesville Middle School in the old academy building. Yes, ma'am.
I thought it was just remote learning right now.
For Central Haywood?
Yeah.
It is right now, but on the 20th, we're going to bring them back in, yes. Any other questions, board members? Are you good?
No, that's good. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Dr. Putnam, I believe.
Mr. Chairman, this is just an update. Wanted to make sure y'all understood that we had provided, you still can't hear me? Is that better? Leave it to Jill to break the microphone. Just kidding. We had, we had agreed to provide meal service to Shining Rock Classical Academy. That was in, they had hopes of offering a full, full-day daycare and requirements and licensing. I'm not real sure what the issue is, but we will not be providing meals. They didn't get something they needed to offer that at this time, so just wanted to make sure you were aware.
Okay, any questions for Dr. Putnam? Thank you for the update, Dr. Putnam.
Thank you.
We have had a couple of folks sign up to address the board. Now is a time period designated by the Board of Education for public comments. This time is set aside for comments from the general public in regard to matters of concern to the public. However, comments addressing specific students and/or personnel are prohibited due to confidentiality laws and regulations. Comments are limited to three minutes. The board requests that all speakers adhere to the time limitation and prohibition against mentioning individual students and personnel. First, we have signed up Ms. Stephanie Bell.
Hey, guys. I just want to say that Haywood County does have the best schools. I'm a Haywood County student myself, and I actually went through Mr. Woody's history class, and Ms. Rochester taught me the U.S. Constitution, and I guess that's why y'all see me so much, because I believe in our, our Constitution, our liberty and our rights. And I know I'm beating a dead horse because I'm, you're going to see me every month. That's all I have to say. But I did print out the Haywood County COVID-19 monitoring for how many deaths the whole time that COVID's been going on, and this is the age of children, the very one and only is from 25 to 49 years old. The rest are 70 and above. Our children are not being affected by this. Ms. Henderson will not answer any of our questions. We've asked her to provide us under the U.S. section of law to show us that there's actually COVID. It exists. They have copies from the CDC. They have no information. They sent back a letter saying they have nothing. They have nothing to show me. I just want you guys to know that, once again, you know, y'all took an oath, and it's to protect the Constitution. In Title 18, U.S. Section 242, the Deprivation of Rights Under the Color of Law, states that whoever, under color of any law, statute, ordinance, regulation, or custom, willfully subjects any person or any state, territory, commonwealth, possession or district to the deprivation, deprivation of any rights, privileges, or immunity secured or protected by the Constitution of the United States shall be fined under this title and imprisoned, blar, sky, blar. We have rights. The health of my children is my responsibility. The Health Department is actually giving harsher quarantines than what the CDC even recommends. This woman is on a power trip. An executive order, which I can give you, was signed by Barack Obama, Executive Order 13295, look it up, 13295, on July 31st, 2014. They miraculously changed the law that said that the Health Department has the authority to quarantine people for SARS. They knew already before it even happened. Right there goes to tell you that they knew. I know that they're pressuring you guys, and they're being a bully, and I need y'all to stand up and just say, "Listen, I don't care what y'all say, but this is their liberty, their right, their health decision for their children." I know I'm only one, but I have calls every day of people saying, "This teacher's not wearing their mask. I've watched all you guys touch your mask. These masks aren't helping." I'll see you guys next month. Thank you.
Next, we have Stephanie Knouse.
Hey, guys. I've never done this before, so forgive me. I'm here for the same reason she is. I have a 4th grader at Clyde Elementary, and he's asthmatic. He has a hard enough time as it is with any activity, but he has complained every single day coming home about headaches, feeling sick to his stomach. He cannot concentrate. He cannot breathe. When he found out that the masks were going to be optional, he was ecstatic about going back to school. He hates going back to school. And this is a child that last year, despite everything that he went through with remote learning and how hard it was making that transition, he was still an A/B honor roll student. He absolutely loves school. And now that he has to wear the mask, he can't concentrate. He feels like he's going to fail. And to me, this feels like a failure on myself because all I want is for the best for him. And whenever I see him get out of the car and put that mask on, I know he feels, he just, he doesn't feel normal. And as a 4th grader, it's hard to feel that way anyway. I also have a two-and-a-half-year-old who has been going through speech therapy because his teachers, his daycare, wear masks all day long, and he cannot hear them properly. He cannot see the words coming out of their mouth. You also don't see the facial expressions coming off of people's faces, so you don't recognize emotion. So he's learning a lot about his emotions. He doesn't know how to communicate with his friends, and a lot of his children in his class don't know how to either. His speech therapist has said that she has had more caseloads now in the last two years than she has ever had because of the masks. And it's, it's, for me, it feels like it is doing more harm than good. Not only that, but my 4th grader is not allowed a mask break in his classroom. Last year, I requested to have extra mask breaks because he has such a hard time with it. His teacher then granted it. The teacher this year will not. He told me that he was made to wear his mask outside on the playground while playing football and kickball when it was 85 degrees outside, which isn't healthy for anyone, and they shouldn't have to be wearing them outside in the first place, especially if they can social distance, right? So I keep replaying this in my head. Last year, Mr. Burnett, every week called us about a new COVID case, and he said, "You'll be contacted if you're considered a close contact, and that is 15 minutes or more for less than six feet without a mask." Okay, so that is considered a close contact. Well, you know, if you're outside and you've got all this ventilation and air moving and everything, why in the world do you even have to wear the mask, for one? Well, Mr. Burnett called me personally because I had an issue with it, and he said, "As long as they can stand at arm-length from each other, that they don't have to wear a mask outside." Well, then, I get to school, and I see three teachers standing behind my car while I'm in car line with no mask on, very close to each other, chatting it up. Meanwhile, I see all the kids with their masks on. It's just not fair. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments tonight, ladies. Next, board members, you Next, board members, you had an opportunity to look at the August 9, closing regular session minutes, the August 13, emergency virtual meeting, August 19, emergency virtual meeting, August 21, emergency virtual meeting, and September 9, closed session minutes. I need a motion for approval.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Henson, and second by Mr. Clark. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next on our agenda, we have Ms. Fox.
Mr. Chairman, I didn't realize that during the open session, you needed to fill out a form to speak. Can I have three minutes or not? Does that have to wait till next month?
Hold on, Ms. Fox. You got three minutes, sir.
Thank you. I appreciate it. And I do apologize for not knowing the protocol for speaking in the open session, but I am here for a concern, as a concerned parent for a 12-year-old that goes to Waynesville Middle. You know, as the ladies speak, I'm not talking about the mask, even though I do wear this, just to make everyone else here comfortable. You know, everyone has their own ideas about the mask, CDC rules or whatever, medical, whatever. My concern is my, my daughter going to a 12-year-old, lugging up a 30-pound backpack along with her lunch, along with an instrument, a musical instrument, and her computer, and not being able to put it somewhere like in a locker. My, I questioned Waynesville Middle. They said it was, it worked last year, so it's, it's just convenience that we're going to do it again this year, then no lockers. Well, it's not, it's not convenient for my daughter. It's not healthy for her to carry that around. They said, well, she can leave some of the things at her, at her, in her classroom. I don't like to leave her things unattended, especially if she has personal items in her purse, that type of thing. She should be allowed to use a locker, that she has someplace to put her stuff, and if she has to leave her musical instrument in the band room, then for her to retrieve it, she has to go all the way back to the band room before she has to get on the bus to go home. So I would love to hear a discussion about bringing the, the lockers back and, because they are wearing masks. I mean, we were in here when everybody isn't wearing masks for a half an hour between classes. They're only there for five minutes. So I, I think there's some discussions there that could be reached and maybe bring the lockers back.
Okay. For the record, would you state your name again, please, sir?
My name's Walter Lucas.
Okay, and you may have said that. I'm sorry if I didn't catch it.
I didn't.
But I just wanted that for the record.
I know you told me that, I don't, you probably don't want me to state my daughter's name, though, right?
No.
Okay.
But thank you for your comments. We don't discuss comments from the public at this time. It's not on the agenda, so.
I appreciate it.
But we appreciate your comments.
Okay, well, thank you for your time.
The superintendent's listening in, and so thank you very much.
I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Now, we'll go back to Ms. Fox.
Thank you, Chairman Francis, and members of the board. You have for your approval tonight, the fees for middle and high school. There are no elementary fees this school year, but you have, they're not, there's not very many differences from what you had last year, but these are for your approval.
Anyone have any questions for Ms. Fox?
Chairman, I'll make a motion at this time that we approve the fees as presented.
Okay. We have a motion from Mr. Rogers, second by Mr. Logan Nesbit. Any question or comments on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. Next, we have Ms. Thompson up for several items on the agenda.
Good evening, Chairman Francis, members of the board. You have before you tonight the 2021-22 Title I plan for your approval.
Any question from Ms. Thompson on the Title I plan? Need a motion for approval. I'll make a motion. Mr. Clark's made the motion to approve. Second by Dr. Rogers. Any question or comments on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. You're up again.
You also have before you the Title II plan for 2021-22.
Make a motion, we approve the Title II plan as presented.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Kirkpatrick. I hear a second. Second by Mr. Rogers. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up.
And you also have the Title IV plan for 2021-22.
Not until we do Title III. Where's Title III? I'm just kidding.
We're skipping around the books.
Go ahead. I'm just kidding.
Title IV plan as presented.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Kirkpatrick. I hear a second. Second by Mr. Clark. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Next, we have Lisa Glantz. Ms. Glantz.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Nolte, Dr. Putnam, and Ms. Barker, I'm asking tonight for your approval for the Title I migrant education program that you have already received.
Okay.
Make a motion at this time. Mr. Chairman, we approve the migrant education program as presented.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Rogers, second by Mr. Kirkpatrick. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Thompson, you're back up.
Number three, but then question one, three you was looking for, is it?
This is a different number, three.
You want me to take what three? Title III is the English second language, and it doesn't have to have four.
I know. I was, I was being facetious. I apologize.
Chairman Francis, members of the board, I do have a three for you. It's just not a title. I have S R three for your approval tonight, the S R three plan.
Okay. Someone. Okay, Mr. Kirkpatrick's made a motion, second by Mr. Clark. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay.
And I have a sole source waiver for our elementary math staff development. We do a sole source waiver when a service is so specific and there are not competitive, it's not a bid, we couldn't do the competitive bid process.
It's time we entertain a motion to approve that.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Henson's made a motion to approve it, second by Mr. Kirkpatrick. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, you're up again now.
The final thing is our contract with Ed Direction and Central Haywood High School. This is part of the grant that we have for Central Haywood High School. The contract is exactly the same as it was written last year, so it's very familiar to us.
Okay.
Make a motion, we approve this contract agreement services.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Rogers, second by Mr. Clark. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor?
This, how many years is this left?
This is year two.
This is our two. Of three.
Of three.
Two of three. Okay, thank you.
Any further questions or comments? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Thompson. You did the marathon run tonight. Next, we have Dr. Putnam.
Come on, get organized.
Dr. Nolte's going to be my assistant.
I can do it, buddy.
He knows how. He's good. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I want to discuss with you the timing of this North Carolina session law, 2021, item number 130. So about Wednesday or Thursday of last week, we were made aware of the need for compliance with this session law. And basically, what it is requiring boards to do is to adopt or create an interim masking policy. So you would, you would essentially be charged or called to adopt a policy that will terminate or go away in time. As to when that would terminate or go away in time, that was not specified in the guidance. This guidance came to us from the North Carolina School Board Association, as well as Shetley and Campbell, who is also what we use administratively for legal guidance. I wish they had provided policies that would work for what your current decision is, which is a evolving or changing masking policy. What we were provided, though, was an all-or-none policy, and so neither of those policies worked or fit with, with the current decision. And in fairness, what we have is a plan, so we discussed this in work session a good bit, and Dr. Nolte has worked in consult with Pat Smathers in drafting or crafting a policy, and what you have before you is a copy of that draft policy. You'll also notice in there that boards are required to vote monthly in regard to the masking policy. I think, again, with the current plan, you're basically acknowledging to execute or utilize that plan from month to month, the one that's already been agreed upon. So that's all the information I have. Might there be questions?
My only question would be, is the timeline, this needs to be put into place fairly quick, is that correct?
That is correct.
So we would have to suspend the rules?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Motion to suspend.
Okay, we have a motion from Dr. Rogers, suspend the rules of the 30-day input period, because it's not really an input. Do I hear a second? Second by Mr. Clark. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Kirkpatrick paused it as well. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now, we got to pass the policy, correct?
That's correct.
All right. Need a motion to approve the policy as presented. Mr. Clark's made a motion. I hear a second. Second by Mr. Nesbit. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor?
So this policy is the one that you was talking about that was passed, and then we've put our, our stuff in it? Is that what it is?
That is correct. It is, it is in written form. You know, we had a visual or a graphic that made it easier.
Then we put it inside his policy.
That's correct.
The only difference is we've got to vote on it every month now.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the, the two drafts, and I'm just repeating what Dr. Putnam's already said, the two drafts that they sent us really did not address what you had done, which we thought was pretty smart. And in all fairness to public health, they, they talked to us about it when we, when we did it. But the two drafts they sent us was mask forever until we change it, or no mask forever until we change it. And as you know, the plan that you all approved on August the 21st was, as the cases change over time, we would move in and out of masking. And so we just took the language that you have already approved and embedded it in the policy, because the state is now requiring a policy.
That's correct. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay. I need a motion to approve. Did I already get that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I already got a motion.
I've got a distraction. I'm sorry. All right. There being no further discussion, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I want to turn the meeting over to my vice-chair for just a second. I've had a call from my mom, and I'm afraid she might be having a problem.
Yes, sir.
Okay, the next item on the agenda will be the policies for first reading. Dr. Putnam, you're up again.
So you have for first reading, 3610 Counseling Program, 5210 Distribution and Display of Non-School Material, Policy 6140 Student Wellness, 6210 Organization of School Nutrition Services, 6220 Operation of School Nutrition Services, 6230 School Meal and Competitive Food Standards, 6305 Safety and Student Transportation Services, 6315 Drivers, 6321 Bus Routes, 6450 Purchase of Services, 7100 Recruitment and Selection of Personnel, 7130 Licensure, 7430 Substitute Teachers, and 9020 Facility Design. The reason you keep seeing large strings of policies, a law will change, or the footnotes need updating to, to address the proper legal reference, and that's what most of these are.
Okay. All right, we will table those policies that you just went over for 30 days for public comment, and then we'll bring them back next month for a vote. So we have the second readings now.
Yes, for second reading, 3300 School Calendar and Time for Learning, and 3460 Graduation Requirements for Approval.
Make a motion, we approve the 3300 and 3460 as presented.
We have a motion on the floor for Mr. Kirkpatrick to approve the second reading, and then a second by Mr. Rogers. Any discussion on any of the policies brought with the board? There being none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Putnam, and thank you for the hard work of the policy committee. I know Mr. Rogers has been, been busy as well on there, so I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I think Ms. Swanger takes good care of it.
Everything's fine. Everything's fine.
All right, I want to turn it back over to Chairman Francis.
All right. We're back to our regular monthly financial reports. Okay, Mr. Clark, you're next.
Mr. Chairman, the finance committee reviewed the monthly financial reports, and everything looks good. I'd like to bring them for a vote, please.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Clark.
Second.
Second by Mr. Nesbit, I believe. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Anything else from the finance? Thank you very much for the hard work of the finance committee and all the work you do, and I know we've got building the grounds. We have Dr. Rogers next.
Mr. Chairman, I have three items to bring before the board. First is a motion from Building the Grounds to approve Clyde Elementary School to purchase a freestanding ID sign with electronic LED display. The cost of that sign is $23,715. That will be paid in full by Clyde Elementary. I'll bring that before the board as a motion.
We have a motion from Dr. Rogers. I hear a second. Second by Mr. Rogers. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Second, we have a plasma cutter at Tuscola High School in their drafting program that they would like to put on Gov. deals, and Building the Grounds will bring that before the board as a motion.
Okay, we have a motion from Dr. Rogers. I hear a second. Second by Mr. Burnett. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor?
Are they getting a new one to replace that one, or they just don't need it?
They don't need it.
I can answer it.
Okay.
It's actually in the welding program.
You'll need to come up to the microphone, please, Ms. Glantz.
Sorry about that. It's actually in the welding program, and that plasma cam, or that plasma cutter is so old that they cannot get any of the software to work with it. So we have purchased a new one, and we got it back in May. So we have purchased a new one, and we got it back in May. So, and we're needing space, and we got to get rid of the old one so we can use the new one.
Thank you. That answers a lot of our questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
So that Gov. deals, we're selling it? Is that what? Okay. That's what I was, we're surplus. Okay.
Any other questions or comments before we vote? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And finally, Mr. Chairman, Building the Grounds brings forth a motion to approve Western North Carolina Communities being named as a trustee of funds provided by Dogwood Trust for Tuscola Farm, pending approval of memorandum of understanding by the Haywood County Schools Board Attorney.
Okay. We have a motion from Mr. Dr. Rogers. Do I hear a second?
Okay.
Second by Mr. Rogers. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? Sounds like good news. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Anything else from Building the Grounds tonight? All right. Thank you for the hard work on Building the Grounds, Dr. Rogers and your crew. Next on our agenda, we have Dr. Nolte.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, staff and guests, we sent you a proclamation that usually goes to principals, and they, through the, through the years, have chosen to proclaim Constitution Week at their school, so placing additional emphasis on teaching around and about the Constitution. I talked to Chairman Francis about that, and we thought that we might share this with you, and that you might want to consider approving the proclamation as a board. If so approved, you, the, it would be the week of September seventeenth through twenty-third.
Make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Henson's made a motion to approve the proclamation, and Mr. Kirkpatrick's made the second. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor?
Thank you for doing this, Dr. Nolte. I think this is something that should have been done a long time ago, coming from this board, that we do recognize the Constitution Week, because it is something that is dear and heart to, should be to every American, that we do have a U.S. Constitution. And thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions, comments? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Dr. Nolte.
Thank you, board. Board, for your consideration and information, I want to share the personnel that we discussed previously in closed session. For your information, we have twenty-one separation from employment, we have eight employee status changes, two student-teacher interns, and five leave of absence. For your approval, we have forty-one employments. For your approval, employee status changes, we have seventy-three, and we'll come back later and pull number thirty-one. For your approval, two leave of absence, forty-six contracted services, five substitutes, nine employee coaches, five non-employee coaches, and volunteer services. So I present all of those for your approval, except number thirty-three under employee status change.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the personnel as presented. Mr. Francis has made a motion to approve the personnel, and Dr. Rogers, I think, seconded it. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And under employee status change number thirty-three, Mr. Chairman, I understand you had a board member who wanted to abstain from that vote.
Yeah, Mr. Nesbit has asked to be able to abstain from the vote due to its being a family member, so he's going to be exempt from voting on this particular employee.
Make a motion, we approve number thirty-three, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Rogers and a second from Mr. Clark to approve number thirty-three. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven and one abstention.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
Thank you, board.
Thank you very much. It's been a great meeting, a lot of, got a lot of recognitions and great news about our school and all the hard work that we've done, and so congratulations to everyone, and meeting adjourned.